All right, good evening everyone. On behalf of the Boone County Voices for Change Organization, I'd like to welcome all of you to tonight's School Board Candidate Forum. It's very important tonight that we show our children and we show our community that we can have civil discussions. And our community, show our community as well that we can have civil discussions regardless of viewpoints expressed. As a community, we are here to listen to eight school board candidates express their views about a variety of topics. As moderator of this event, I respectfully ask that audience members remain quiet during the forum. No whooping, no hollering, no shouting. A friend of mine used to say that during commitment to the parents, but that never worked. I will invite you to applaud and acknowledge the candidates after a few opening remarks, and I will invite you to thank them after the forum concludes. Please be respectful of everyone, and in so doing, it is my hope that we can cover as many topics as possible during the next one and a half hours. So I want to thank you for giving up your evening, for being here. At seven o'clock, we will start promptly, and we will get the candidates out, and then I will begin asking a number of questions to the candidates about Zionsville Community Schools in our community. So thank you, and we'll get started here shortly.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for coming. My name is Dan Hornaday. We're glad you're here. I just want to have a housekeeping matter. My tech department tells me that if you don't absolutely have to be on the Wi-Fi for town hall to not be, to help our streaming, because we're doing live streaming here. It is my great pleasure to introduce Dr. Rocky Killian, who's our moderator tonight. Dr. Killian has served in public education for 32 years in various roles, including music educator, principal, and most recently as superintendent of schools for the West Lafayette Community School Corporation. In 2015, he was named Superintendent of the Year by the Indiana Association for Public School Superintendents. Dr. Killian holds a BA in Sacred Music from Central Bible College, a BS in Musical Education from Southwest Missouri State University, a Master of Music and Education from the University of Cincinnati, and a PhD in Education Administration from Purdue University. So he's eminently qualified. He has recently retired and moved here to Zionsville. So we thank him so much for doing this for us tonight. Thank you.
So I'm a little out of practice in public speaking, being I've been retired a little over a year, so if I mess up a little bit, I'm human. Good evening, my name is Rocky Killian. I've been asked by the Boone County Voices for Change to moderate the Zionsville Community School Board Candidate Forum. I would like to thank the organization for putting this civic forum together. And now, I would like to ask the eight school board candidates to enter and find their respective places. Hopefully, they heard me. We decided to put them in back so we can have a grand entrance, but there's no sound back there. And I will let you know when we're going to thank them for being here. So hold your applause just for a moment, because I have a few reminders to the candidates for the forum this evening. Now, I'm going to turn my attention to the candidates. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for participating in this forum. Thank you for adhering to the rules of this forum. As a reminder, each of you will be given two minutes for your opening statement, and then one and a half minutes each to answer the questions that I have developed, and I've asked the Boone County Voices for Change Committee to review, but the final questions were finalized by me. The more we adhere to these timeframes, the more topics we can cover. Also, I've asked the audience to remain silent during the forum, except for welcoming you at the beginning and at the end, thanking you for your participation. So, audience members, let's give it up for the eight candidates for being here tonight. So before the forum, a name was drawn from the eight names running for school board, and the name drawn is Kristi Powell. And she will be first with the question that I will ask first, and then we will move to their left, your right. Their left, to allow each of the other candidates answer the same question, and then I will rotate to the next person to the left of the first person that answered the first question, so everyone gets a chance, hopefully, to be first. Now, if I can remember all of that, we're going to be in good shape. So, as the moderator, I reserve the right to have a follow-up question to any of the candidates, if time allows. And you have a timekeeper sitting here in front of you, Kristi. Kristi will hold up a yellow card when you have 30 seconds left, and then she will hold up a red card when time is up, and then you'll also hear some technology going off. So let's begin, and we're going to start with Kristi, and then we'll move left to right for this question. And as a reminder, if you need the question repeated, please ask that before you get into answering the question, so that it doesn't eat into your time. So, starting with Kristi, please tell us about your background and experience, and include why you are running for Zionsville Community School Board. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Kristi Wessel-Powell.
Move the mic towards you. You probably need it closer yet.
Hello. Can you hear me? Is it on? They're not on. Hello, I'm Kristi Wessel-Powell, and I am a candidate for the at-large school board seat this fall. I am a professor at Purdue University in the College of Education, so I work with new teachers, and I teach them how to teach reading and writing. I also manage multimillion-dollar budgets as an education researcher and professional development provider for the Department of Education. I am focused on literacy and school equity. And before coming to Purdue, I got my PhD in literacy education from IU Bloomington. And then before getting any degrees, higher degrees, I was a K through second grade teacher. So I was a teacher in mostly large urban classrooms in big cities like Chicago. I was a literacy coach in St. Louis, and also taught kindergarten in Brooklyn, New York, and in Gary, Indiana. And I am excited to bring my background as an education researcher and former teacher to the board to enhance the good work that they already do. I have two kids in ZCS. One is a middle schooler at Z West, and the other started out at Stonegate, but is now at Trailside, the new elementary school. And I'm a strong advocate for public schools. I'm running for school board to bring my perspective as an educator and to add value to the current board. I would make decisions based on educational research and evidence. And this board already functions efficiently and collaborates wisely, so I'm looking forward to giving back to our schools. Thanks.
Michael. Hi there, my name is Michael Berg. I am currently on the school board. I'm running for reelection in one of the Eagle seats. First and foremost, outside of being on the school board, I'm a father. I've got three great kids, one at the high school, two at Zionsville Middle School. I am, oh, and I've got two nieces in the district also. They're great, too. I am, by training and background, I'm a mental health therapist. I've been doing that for about 20 years. The bulk of that time, I was working with children and adolescents, families, working in and around schools, and with all the sort of relevant systems. Anyway, legal system, all of that good stuff. In the last few years, I've sort of transitioned to doing, I still practice as a therapist, but I manage programs for a large hospital system that are focused on HIV, the non-medical parts of HIV. I write and manage grants, manage the staff, and then provide services to clients also. I'm running for reelection. Honestly, the biggest reason is, you know, I have come to love and really respect the teachers and administrators of this district. I feel like there are folks who are trying to cut down on their autonomy, and I think that if we're going to continue to innovate, it needs to come from the folks who are trained to do that. I can probably guess I'm passionate about mental health, and children's mental health specifically, and I want to continue to help to support those efforts, because I think they are terribly important, unfortunately. And I want to help protect property values, because schools are the number-one reason people move to this community. And if we drive the teachers out and the admins out, we're going to lose that. So I want to help to... Oh, I'm done.
Tim. Good evening, everybody. My name is Tim Hart, and I'm running to be your school board representative here in Eagle Township. I'm married to my wife, Tanette. Got two boys here at Zionsville Schools. Got an eighth grader at Z West, and also have a sophomore over at the high school. I've lived in and/or worked here in Zionsville for the last 18 years. Graduated from North Central High School, went to Ball State, where I received my Bachelor of Arts in Secondary Education and in Spanish. Also received a Multicultural Studies certificate there as well. Currently, I serve as a trainer, a sales training manager over at Angie's. The last 35 years, I have done nothing but worked directly with and advocate for kids. I've served in the role of a teacher. I was a high school teacher for eight years, served as a department chair of the English as a New Language Program at North Central High School. Was my last teaching gig. I've served on nonprofit boards that work directly with kids and educating kids in the classroom. And I've also volunteered. I coach, coached for over 25 years, business owner, and of course, as a parent, right? So my priorities running for board are these. One, I feel it's really important we restore some transparency and accountability, as well as communication with the board to families. I think that's been lacking here over the last few years. I'm also very excited about the opportunity to get back to refocusing and allowing our teachers to refocus on the core academic content that they went to college to learn how to teach. I was a Spanish teacher. That was my go-to. I was an Honors of American History teacher. When I was teaching that content, I wanted to make sure that I didn't have as very many distractions. And I feel like today, our teachers have too many other things that are put on their plate that are taking them away from focusing on that non-academic, or on that academic construction. So that's why I'm running for school board. Thank you.
Mike.
Good evening, my name is, excuse me, my name is Mike Cusens. I'm your current union representative on the school board. That's a position that actually the entire district gets to vote for, so it's not just union, families voting for union, it's district-wide, everyone can vote for that. That is true for the Eagle Township positions. I've been in that position now for three years. My wife, Tracy, and I, we have lived here in Zionsville for 20 years. We have four kids, two that actually have graduated through the entire school system, all the way from union, all the way through high school. I have two daughters that are in the high school. One's a senior, one is a sophomore as well. Again, I think it's a great opportunity to have these kids learn and experience fun things here within our school corporation. With that, you know, things that I'm looking at as we focus on things in the new school system, you know, academics focusing on, you know, what's important for the kids to learn, to grow, learn in a safe environment, so safety is an important thing for me as well, and financial responsibility as we look at our funding from the state. The taxpayers, unit taxpayers, are helping us afford one quarter of our staff being in the schools, which is awesome, and you all should be applauded for that. Why am I running? Sorry, 30 seconds. Two things really is, you know, my involvement, starting at Union Elementary all the way through, you know, being involved, supporting the kids in multiple ways. The additional pieces as we transition to a new superintendent, starting in February, I want to ensure that Mrs. Kaufman has the team in place to help support her with her new initiatives that she's going to bring to the school corporation.
Marcus.
Marcus Sutch. I'm running for the union seat as well, on the Zionsville School Board. First, I just want to say thank you to everyone who's come here. Obviously, there's a strong engagement in the community, and I'm very appreciative of all of you for taking some of your precious time on this Tuesday evening, or to come educate yourselves about where we stand and who we are, so that you can make an informed decision when you go to the polls this November. Also, thank you to the Boone County Voices for Change for allowing us this opportunity to come speak to all of you. A little bit about me, a little bit of my background. A little bit about me is that I've lived in the area about 25 years or so, here in Zionsville, here in Carroll a little bit. Maybe a little too close. I've been married for about 10 years to my lovely wife, Dawn, who is somewhere out there. And I have two young, very loud children, a six-year-old son and a three-year-old daughter. From a professional standpoint, I am a trained and experienced actuary with extensive skills and knowledge of data analytics, finance, as well as statistics. And I've got a lot of experience managing large teams, as well as multimillion-dollar budgets. Some of these skills I'd really like to bring to bear for the Zionsville community and our school system. Our schools are excellent. I think we have amazing schools and incredible teachers, but like anything in life, I think everything can improve. Some things that I am running for and that I'd like to see improve is I'd like to see a stronger partnership between the community and parents and the school board itself. I'd also like to see increased transparency and accountability from our school board, so that we can better understand motivations and planning underlying some of the decision-making that goes on in the school board meetings, as well as empowering, supporting our teachers. I think they have a lot on their plate, so I think we can take some of that off, either through better resources that can treat those things, or anything else, but allowing them to refocus themselves back to academics and teaching.
Thank you. Jen.
Hi, my name is, sorry. Hi, my name is Jen Valentine, and thank you, Dr. Killian, and to Boone County Voices for Change, for hosting this event for us. I am running for the Union Township School Board seat. I have a degree in Human Resource Management with a concentration in Training and Development. I worked for 15 years at a CPA firm in Michigan, where I was responsible for the implementation and conversion of accounting software packages primarily for automotive manufacturers and suppliers in and around the Detroit area. And if you can kind of imagine, the Y2K was an actual thing. So right when I was starting out, I got to go into all of those applications and should make it a four-digit year rather than the two-digit year. So that was a good start for me. I was in charge of setting the budgets and staffing, along with report writing and team building activities. So I loved my job. But when we moved here in 2014, my husband and our four kids, we decided that my job was going to be to integrate myself into the school system and this community. We chose Zionsville primarily for the schools, as many of you did too, I'm sure, in this audience. So my job was to integrate into the schools, and I did just that. What I hope to accomplish as a member of the school board is to, I'm a doer. I am enthusiastic about learning and educating, and I love our teachers and our administrators, and I will do everything that I can to support them and all of our kids moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Matt.
Hello, I'm Matt Kiefer. I want to thank everybody for who put on the event and is here tonight and listening on the stream. I'm very independent, outspoken, I don't have any group support. I sort of like not having any group support, because nobody owns me. I have a lot of grassroots support, and I'm working very hard to meet as many people in the community and give my points across. It's all posted up on Facebook, and I got a website also. Most of you will be getting some material from me, because I got some volunteers, and I'm going to try to get it to as many people as possible. I think critically, that means I evaluate both sides of issues. I look at the facts, I make my opinion. Doesn't mean I can't evolve and change my opinion. There's a lot of things I don't know about the schools. I've heard things about the schools, the deeper I look into them, maybe it's not all what whoever was telling me what it is. I'm a medical doctor by training, spent 36 years practicing. I'm winding down, but I'm still going to keep working. I have a lot of experience with leading people through times where they're stressed and under pressure. I've been described as wanting to dismantle the system. We've lived here 30 years. I had four kids graduate, I've got grandkids in the Stonegate School. I am the biggest ally of children, teachers, and parents of anybody up here.
Thank you. Sarah.
Okay, wait, I want to check my voice. Can you hear me? Okay. I'm not as good as the rest of them. I might be reading still. Hi, and thank you for coming tonight. I'm Sarah Estherline Sampson, and I'm running for the at-large school board seat. I'm a 17-year resident of Zionsville, and I have 10 children, all of whom have attended Zionsville schools. I actively volunteer in roles such as the parent-teacher organization at each school, which does require me to be in the schools before, during, and after school hours. So I've been asked several times if I work there. I've made many personal connections within the buildings by interacting with the teachers and the students and the staff and admin. As the high school PTO president, my focus has been on morale for the past three years. I'm always impressed with the dedication of the Zionsville volunteers, and have enjoyed serving with many of you here in this room. I attended the University of Notre Dame and received my Bachelor of Business Administration. I majored in accounting, became a CPA, and worked in the audit department for Deloitte. My specialty was in healthcare, financial services, and nonprofits. I'll use this background and facts and data to be fiscally responsible while on the school board. As the school board rep, I will promote adding classes to our curriculum. I believe the addition of electives in the industrial arts and consumer science categories would be a great way to teach lifelong usable skills. Learning cooking, budgeting, how to do taxes, and the teaching in woodworking or small engine repair could open up possible career paths. We'd be giving skills of dexterity to this generation while simultaneously working to help address the limited supply of trade labor in the current workforce. It's an excellent way to get the students off of their computers for a period. I'm hoping to get the chance to represent you. I pay attention to many topics at school, as some of my children have been identified as high ability. I have a special needs child with an IEP, and I have children who are in between those levels. I'm willing to be transparent. I am focused on keeping our school district a leader in the state of Indiana. I'm asking you to vote for me, Sarah Sampson.
Thank you.
I've been asked to remind all of you, if you can lean into your mic, and don't touch the mic, but if you can grab the stand and move it closer to you when you speak, that will help us with the audio that we're trying to make work in this room and online. So thank you very much for doing that. So Michael, you're going to be up with this question, and then we'll go around the table just like we did. So here's question number one, or maybe number two, if you count it as the first one. If elected, what would your priorities be in your first year on the school board? And what changes, if any, would you like to see regarding Zionsville Community School District policies or programs? And again, if you need that repeated before you answer, that won't eat into your time. So Michael?
All right. It's a big question for 90 seconds. I mean, Mike beat me to it earlier when he, or sorry, Mr. Cusens beat me to it, when he said, you know, we have a big transition coming in the next year, and March 1st, we have a new superintendent starting. I think, you know, anytime you have someone leaving after 17 years, there's sort of a sea change of place. And, you know, the great news is, we have a wonderfully prepared person who's been working closely with him for a long time to take over. I think that's the biggest immediate thing on the agenda. You know, we obviously are coming out of a challenging pandemic time, we're sort of still in it, but we're transitioning back to normal life. And kids have borne the brunt of a lot of that, you know, mental health issues are significantly more challenging across the board. It's not just a student-focused issue right now, but continuing to look at the wellness of our children and the wellness of our teaching staff who are impacted by that also. Thank you. Tim.
Yep. Yeah, again, a big year coming up for sure with the change at the superintendent level. My priorities, first and foremost, would be to reestablish the lines of communication between families and the board. Open that up. One of my policy changes that would take place, again, if I could wave my magic wand, would be to allow parents and the board members an opportunity to actually have conversations at board meetings, so that parents can actually have their questions answered. I think that is critical to reestablishing the lines of communication, rebuilding, I think, some of the damage that's been done over the last few years, where parents feel that they've been unheard. So that would be one of my initial policy changes, would be to go ahead and initiate policies at the board level, so that parents can go ahead and have a voice. Again, as we look at the classroom, I want to make sure the teachers are truly empowered, as I said in my opening statement, to be the best teacher that they can be with their content. I want my students, my kids, and I want all students to leave their math classroom being the best math student they can be, to leave their art class being the best art student they can be, to leave their English class being the best English student they can To leave their English class being the best English student they can be. And have teachers have the time and the ability to focus on their core content. So looking at policies, talking to teachers, finding out what their needs are, and making sure that as a board, we're driving policies that affect change there in the classroom to empower teachers. And again, to affect change to make sure parents are heard and are responded to.
Time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Um, I, I think I want to echo what Tim was kind of talking about with the academics. You know, again, I think that's a key focus beyond just, you know, how do we transition? You know, academics, how do we come out of the pandemic? How are we doing as a school corporation? I think there's some really good, exciting things that, you know, we're already seeing. I think just this, this last spring, for the first time, our juniors were required to take, take the SAT test. That was part of a state mandate. And from that standpoint, our junior class this spring scored as the top in the state, the number one in the state when it came to reading and writing. And then also that same group of juniors, now seniors, they were number three in the state for math. So, you know, again, how do we continue to focus on that for the, for the students that we, you know, give them the opportunity to succeed? It's really important. And let's not forget about, let's not forget about Pleasant View, their ability, what they did with, you know, the excellence in early literacy award that we received. Very quickly, you know, looking at some policies, changes, things like that. We, we do have existing policies in place for parents and teachers and staffs and school board to talk to each other. So we can review that, but I think there's probably some, I want to say educations, some bringing that information out to make sure people understand how that works.
Thank you. Marcus?
Yeah, so similar to what you've heard from, from Tim and from Mike, I, I think that we need to reestablish open lines of communication between parents in the community and the school board. I think too often over the last two, three years, parents were showing up at school board meetings to express concerns over a wide variety of things. And those comments were effectively, it felt as if they were unheard, my own included in that. So I think we need to open up communication so that there can be a back-and-forth dialogue and discussion so that we can feel more connected and be able to better reflect the community at large. In addition to that, I think communication between our educators, our teachers, and the board needs to be enhanced. I, I've heard from a number of teachers, a little bit of a fear of being able to speak to board members for fear that there might be some sort of reprisal or some sort of unfair criticism of them in the workplace if they were to raise an issue. I believe that there needs to be something put in place such that those teachers that need to express concerns or issues can do so anonymously in addition to with their own name on it if they so choose. I, I think that that's vital for identifying issues in the school system. Lastly, I think we need to develop a firm plan and timeline for how we're going to try to improve our academic scores to get them back to effectively pre-COVID levels. I believe that there was a hit with COVID and its impact, but I think we need a firmer plan on how to improve those levels back in line.
Thank you. Jen?
I guess my priorities would be for sure, mental health. I know a lot of people have discussed mental health within the school system and some shy away from providing that support internally. But I think it's extremely important to address it and to normalize it and to help these kids and these teachers through these times. It's, three years has been a long time, but I will be the first to tell you that mental health has been an issue with kids for much longer than just three years. So, um, mental health is extremely important to me and making sure that our teachers and our educators and administrators have the tools that they need to properly address our children is important to me. Communication, like everyone has said, two-way communication is extremely important. And I do agree that having a two-way, a dialogue with the parents is supremely important. And so that our parents can be heard and that our teachers and administrators can respond to them. So whether that's quarterly or, you know, every six months, I think it's important. Or if they can write off the questions ahead of a, a meeting, then we can address those at a, at a, at a meeting that they can all hear their responses to. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt?
This question goes straight to my point number one of my ten bulletin points I put out to discuss the issues. Empower the teachers to educate, not indoctrinate. That includes several things. The teachers are suffering from burnout and fatigue. I've talked to some of them. It's a never enough syndrome. It's the same with nurses in my field. You do all the stuff to do your job, you have passion for it, and then things get piled on more every year. You have to do more evaluations, you have to do more paperwork, you have to field more questions from parents and administrators. They come in your room to evaluate you. It's stressing them out. We need to simplify the teacher's workload so it's focused on educating the kids and not satisfying the state and whoever else wants them to do all this other stuff. We need to empower the teachers. The, the children need a more traditional curriculum and that will reduce confusion when you're talking to age-inappropriate children about subjects. There'll be less mental health issues, but the kids are focused on learning what they're supposed to be learning at the appropriate age. And I'm all for the age-appropriate discussion of any social issue as long as it's in a balanced fashion.
Thank you. Sarah?
Could you repeat the question?
Sure. If elected, what would your priorities be in your first year on the school board? And what changes, if any, would you like to see regarding Zionsville Community School District policies or programs? You're up.
As a school board rep, I already spoke about the classes that I want to see. I went to the school board last night and asked for a task force to be formed looking into the consumer science and the industrial arts. I'm already trying to take action and I'm not on the school board yet. I am very much in belief of the mental health needing to be addressed, but this could actually help in that way. If children are using their hands instead of lost in a screen, they might have a way to release the pressure that is on them. I'd like to find a way to help the community work things out instead of fighting it out. There are a lot of people who want more transparency and I think that's okay. Teachers are experts in their academic materials and parents are experts in their children's upbringing. I embrace this collaboration so we are able to help each child be their best self. Parent involvement has been an initiative for years. I can remember Tony Dungy calling for parents to be present and supportive in his All ProDads group. There's, when the school was lacking parents for volunteers, it happened here in Zionsville, but we are lucky to have parents that step up and volunteer and be a part of it. And I think the school board should recognize that involvement and have a way for the parents to communicate better and receive responses better. I'd like to make sure we're paying the teachers and the administrators and staff appropriate amounts to ensure we don't suffer from attrition due to other communities hugging our best teachers.
Thank you. Kristi?
Wow, there've been some great, um, there've been some really great answers that I want to build on already.
Okay, pause.
Do you want to use this one?
All right, no, don't do that. Here's what we're going to do. I've been working on my administrative stuff over here, so while you're talking, I'm trying to solve the problems. So I have this wireless mic and when we have a mic issue, we're going to pause the time. I'm going to get the wireless mic to you and you're going to use it to finish your answer or to give your answer. So it won't eat into your time and as I tried to do as a superintendent, try to solve the problems so everything works well.
Thank you very much.
And if you guys want to just pass that around?
Sure, thank you. Yeah, um, the school board has definitely contended with a lot over this past year, I think more than they signed up for. So I want to commend them on that, um, the global pandemic. And now we're getting a new superintendent of redistricting. That was a minor issue that should have been major in a lot of other districts. But as the two mics said, super, supporting the new superintendent, which we are so fortunate to have, homegrown and already have a lot of support and strong leadership within the district is something that I'll be excited to learn from the current board and administration about how things are run and to be able to be apprenticed into, into working in the best ways for the schools. There's also immense gross, um, growth. I did not mean to say growth. There's a lot of growth in our community. And so I know that the current board is projecting out the kinds of physical space that we're going to need for everybody to thrive and learn the best that they can. And so, um, something that I'm really thinking about is how Zionsville can maintain its community feel and close-knit atmosphere while accommodating the needs of people that are coming into our schools and will, will be welcoming all families in that. I'm also very interested in this issue of safety. There have been way too many close calls on the way to and from school here at the beginning of the school year in terms of bus safety, biking, and walking to school. And so I know that's something we can collaborate on.
Thank you. All right, Tim, you're up for the question number two or three, depending upon how you're counting. Now, this one is pretty loaded, everyone, so you might want to get your pencils out. This has got a couple of things that you want to pay attention to. What role do you believe the school board should play in determining classroom curriculum, particularly with regard to issues of diversity and inclusion? And how can we provide curriculum transparency without micromanaging teachers? And if you need that repeated at any time, I'll be happy to do that.
Why is that a loaded question?
Do you want to say it again? All right, so I've been asked to repeat it, so here we go again. No problem. What role do you believe the school board should play in determining classroom curriculum, particularly with regard to issues of diversity and inclusion? And how can we provide curriculum transparency without micromanaging teachers? There you go.
That, that's it? That's all, that's all we're going to cover with this question?
Yes.
All right. So I get ten minutes. Perfect. All right, so seriously though, uh, the, the state determines what the board's role is first and foremost in the state of Indiana. There are state standards on what teachers can and can't teach, but the state has empowered school boards with great authority and autonomy to have, make, to make sure that what's going on in the classroom and in the schools are reflective of the community. So I believe the school board has a very important role in helping, working with the superintendent who they hire, who they pay, to make sure that those standards are being met and that those values are being reflected, that, that reflect the community are being taught in the schools. As a teacher, and as a department chair, but as a teacher, it is an incredibly overwhelming responsibility when you're a new teacher and you've got a hundred and forty, a hundred and thirty kids, other people's kids in your classroom that have been entrusted by those parents to make sure that you don't mess it up. You teach your content, you help them out when you need it, et cetera. So, uh, I don't believe that the board should micromanage, but again, I was very concerned about what parents were thinking and what parents worried about was going on in my classroom, as I should. They're not my children. They're my students, but they're not my children. They're the children of the parents that entrusted me to teach them whatever the content was that I was teaching that year. As far as diversity, equity, and inclusion is concerned, I'm going to try and speak to this. I'll come back to it if I can't because as the head of the English, it's a new language program at North Central, I'm all about equity and opportunity. And I'll cover that in a future question. That's, that's past ten minutes, Kristi.
I know it's a loaded question and it's hard to do that in a minute and a half. I understand that, but in order to get to a lot of topics, we tried to put a whole bunch of things in. Mike?
So I, I think the role of the school board really is kind of twofold, in, in my mic in the right spot. You know, obviously, the role of the school board is to set policy for the district. How do we, you know, set the direction that we want to run the school corporation in that way? And that's working with the superintendent, right? So that's a lot of direction and interaction with the school superintendent to, to set policies, direction. The superintendent has, you know, the boots on the ground, they're in the school every day. So it's really critical that we have that alignment together. I'll come back to diversity here in a second as well, but one thing, as we talk about curriculum and whether it would be, you know, curriculum related to diversity, inclusion, or any of our criteria, we already have a policy in place for the school to look at that. So we have the opportunity for parents to come in and look at new curriculum every year. I believe it's in March that we have that open so that parents can come in and look at that policy as well. I'm the yellow sign. Moving back to diversity and equity and inclusion. So again, I think, coming back to that, I think we've worked with the school corporation on that and what does that look like? And how does that feed into strong, in every way, as we have that statement that we talk about, everyone belongs here. That's part of what it is. It's also part of what we see in the SCL, that the state mandates that we need to talk about, and inclusion as well.
Thank you. Marcus?
Diversity and inclusion, it, it is a very loaded topic, isn't it? So I believe that our teachers in our classrooms need to have a stronger partnership with parents, the parents of all their students that are in those classrooms, because a number of those topics, frankly, parents are going to be in a very good spot to help support the teacher in providing that kind of education. I believe that all should be able to have a good education at Zionsville. I think everyone should be accepted. I think everyone should be able to have a success here in our school system. I believe that through that partnership with the parents of the students, I believe that teachers will feel a lighter load from not needing to focus on those subjects and can instead focus on the academics that they were trained in order to teach in the classroom while the, while students are still getting the education that they require, both in the classroom as well as at home. Regarding the curriculum transparency, I believe that we should be a little bit more forthcoming with regard to what is being covered in each classroom. Again, this goes back to that same partnership with parents where I think that, you know, whether it's an online resource or what have you, I believe that we should publish this more widely such that parents are much more informed about what is going to be covered in particular about mature and controversial topics in the classroom so that they can better support the teachers and better support their students in their education.
Thank you. Jen?
Thank you. Um, okay, so with regard to the role of the school board and what, what role they should play, I think it's extremely important to get feedback from the teachers from what curriculum that they are leaning toward in terms of what they're hoping to teach. I think that if, if they can have a say in their curriculum and then bring it to the board, I think then the board can have an open communication with them about what that should be and, and get that approval. I also think that with regard to curriculum transparency, there are many places within the school website where you can actually go in and see the curriculum. You can go in and if you have a problem with the curriculum, you can actually fill out a form that states why the curriculum or whatever the topic is, is not appropriate for your child. So I'm not sure, I think educating our parents and doing a better job getting that information out there and letting them know that those, those are in place for them to know that. Diversity, equity, and inclusion is extremely important to me. And I think that every parent in here could probably agree that they have experiences with their children actually learning and being a part of including students and their classmates. I'm going to get a red sign in a second, so thank you.
Thank you. Matt?
Yes, I, it's coming on back. I think the school board should set the rules for the curriculum. And I, in my view, you should use experienced teachers and ex-teachers on a committee and they give recommendations and they're more than recommendations. Currently, I believe they give recommendations and those can be overridden and even ignored by the administrators in charge of picking the curriculum. I may be wrong, but this is what an ex-teacher has told me. And she's got a relative that's a current teacher. So I think the teachers don't have enough say and I think experienced teachers that have a track record of preparing their students academically and socially, they should have a much larger say in what the curriculum is. of preparing their students academically and socially, they should have a much larger say in what the curriculum is at Seinsville. Once again, it gets back to more traditional, uh, ways of teaching. So you don't have, uh, new, we don't need new concepts. I learned all the stuff in school in the 1960s and 70s to get me all the way through medical school where I learned all the stuff and most of it hasn't changed. And I don't really understand diversity and inclusion because diversity is set by your community. Who moves into the community? That's who's in the class. And everyone should be taught basic human respect for people with different ideas or look different from them.
Thank you. Sarah?
I won't ask to repeat the question. Um, the view of the role of the school board for me is the most important responsibility of the school board is to work with the community to improve student achievement in their local schools. The board is responsible for employing the superintendent, developing and adopting policies, curriculum, the budget, and overseeing the facilities. So school board members should be able to back up their decisions with actions, uh, facts, and data. To be effective, the school board must work with the community, school staff, and families. The board should be transparent and accountable to the public for their actions. Curriculum is reviewed multiple times in a year. There are state standards. And there are teachers on a committee that helped set it after following the state standards to make sure that the curriculum meets those state standards. There is then a review by parents in March. You were right, Mike. And there is curriculum on the website from your teacher. You can get the books that your children are told to read that year at the beginning of the school year. And I think that information is very helpful for people who want to maybe pre-read and monitor. I do agree with offering an alternate book if there is a question from someone who does not agree with the curriculum. And I think diversity and inclusion are incredibly important. But I think inclusion for me comes from my special ed person who I would love to be included. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristi?
Thanks. Although on some of the, um, already great comments here, I agree that the school board's, um, purview is really to hire and work with and direct the superintendent. And although I'm an educator, um, I would disagree. I, I, it is not the purview of the school board to direct curriculum. That is in the hands of professionals. The teachers that we have hired that are, um, guiding, uh, the activities in classrooms according to state standards. And they do that also in conjunction with the kids that they know so well in their classroom. Half of meeting a kid where they are is getting to know them as a person. Once you have that relationship, you can build from there. And so I would like to get out of the way of teachers as a school board and give them the room that they need as professionals to develop a child responsive curriculum that supports the families in our community in the way that the relationships guide the, um, activities that they're going to do in the classroom. Um, and so related to that, uh, if kids can see themselves in the curriculum, they're going to grow into creative, critical thinkers that can change the world. And in terms of diversity, equity, and inclusion, I've worked with tons of different language backgrounds, socioeconomic backgrounds, and racial and cultural, um, backgrounds. As a classroom teacher and I'm working Purdue, and so I think it's really important that everybody does, um, belong here. And the Stronger Than Every Way campaign, I think, is so crucial to our, um, school district. So, thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
All right, thanks. Uh, so in terms of the role of the school board, um, you know, the, the school board ultimately is the executive body that is making sure that the school, uh, the school district can deliver the product of an education to students. Uh, if you hear about places where school boards have gone off the rails, it's 90% of the time because people, school board members did try to micromanage the staff. Uh, the reality is I can't set curriculum, uh, in a subject that I know very little about except for what I took in high school or what I took in middle school. Uh, and we have experts on that who set the curriculum according to, as a couple of people have pointed out, really stringent state guidelines. Uh, it's a ton of work to make sure we're hitting all of them because we have to hit all of them or we get in trouble, right? Uh, so the reality to me is we have to trust those professionals to do that. Uh, and as far as parent concerns about curriculum, the reality is when people come to the school board directly about their concern and they skip the teacher and they skip the administrator, by the time that works its way back to the teachers, it's already a charged situation. I'm in trouble for something, right? Uh, and the reality is because people aren't taking that first step of talking to their teachers about those issues, unfortunately. Uh, so when, when I hear those concerns, I say, well, have you talked to the teacher? Have you talked to the administrator? And 99% of the time, that never makes it back to me because those concerns are resolved. These are experienced professionals.
Thank you. Okay, Mike, you're up for the next question. And we'll go around. There we go. What should the school board's relationship be with the superintendent? What should that look like? And what would you do if you disagreed with the direction the superintendent wants to take our schools? So let me repeat that. What should the school board's relationship with the superintendent look like? And what would you do if you disagreed with the direction the superintendent wants to take our schools?
And I think that kind of dovetails back into the last question as well. So, um, you know, what's the relationship with the school board and the superintendent? Again, the, the school board is the entity that's, you know, hiring and having to replace the superintendent if there is some sort of disagreement or, in our case, a retirement that came up. Um, again, I think it's a great relationship. It's a lot of give and take, back and forth between, um, school board, school board members, and, and the superintendent. The superintendent, again, they have, uh, the, the boots on the ground. They're in the schools. They're talking to the teachers, the rest of the administration staff. So it's really critical that you have that good dialogue back and forth between the board. You have to have that open. So, um, people don't know this. You get an email or a text from, say, the superintendent at 2:00 in the morning when something goes wrong. Um, I'm usually asleep, but I see that when I wake up in the morning. But, you know, there, there's that good back and forth. There's an open dialogue, um, at any point in time. If there is a disagreement, again, you have to work that out professionally. You have to have a conversation. You have a conversation about where you're at. We're adults. We all want to get along. We want to be successful. So we have to have that open dialogue and you come to a resolution of one way or another on whatever that topic might be.
Thank you. Marcus?
So like any corporation, in this case a school corporation, there is a board of trustees. And those are elected by all of you here in this room, um, of these candidates that are here, as well as the two remaining seats that are, are not being elected. That elected body is meant to represent all of you in providing guidance, policy, and direction for the school system. The superintendent is then employed by that body in order to affect and execute that overarching theme and guidance. That's the relationship that I see should be the case. Similar to Mike, I do also believe that everything should be professional. So if there is a disagreement in the direction that the superintendent is driving the school system, I believe the first step is to sit down, have a professional dialogue and conversation with that superintendent, um, and to determine what the right steps forward are. If it's a severe enough disagreement, then that could lead to a separation of some sort. Ultimately, it's the elected body, meaning the school board, that should be setting the overarching policy for the school system at large.
Thank you. And as a reminder, please try to keep the mic closer to your mouth. That will help with the, the online. Jen?
Thank you. Um, so again, uh, I think that it's common thing, but I will, I will share a little, um, personal story. When I moved here and, uh, I was able to be more involved in the schools, I didn't really understand what the school board did. So I went to a meet and greet, um, at, uh, home in a, in the neighborhood. Um, and Dr. Robinson was, uh, was there. And he actually explained to me what his role was and, uh, what the school board actually did. So I thought that was kind of, um, an interesting take for my first exposure to what a school board was and what the superintendent did. Um, so I, I also concur that, um, when we are, uh, as a school board, um, if we disagree with the superintendent, I think that open dialogue is obviously the number one step and, um, and we just have to work through our differences. And if we can't do that, then we'll have to figure out a way to separate, amicably, and, and then, um, I guess that's what I would do. And I think that that's what most of, um, the comments have already been, um, with regard to the superintendent and the board.
Thank you, Matt.
Wait.
And I'm going to take a microphone.
Yeah. You guys are doing this really well.
An effective, uh, school corporation governs the superintendent and reflects the majority community values. That's why we're having problems with a lot of upset parents. They believe that the current superintendent and school board aren't following the majority community values. I will, if elected, it will be because people know where I stand. The majority community values, if you want them, vote for me. We will govern the superintendent. And if he heads off in a different direction, he or she, we will talk to them, talk to them, talk to them. If that continues, there'll be a separation. It's very simple.
Thank you. Sarah?
So I agree that the superintendent is actually hired by the school board and so therefore is under the school board. Um, I do think that there, it has been a lot of discussion that I agree with, so I feel like I'm saying ditto. But, uh, the critical dialogue is very important. I think we're human. We're not always going to see eye to eye or that would be the world we live in. Um, I think if there was a major problem with the superintendent, I would be willing to, um, come to a, an agreement for separation. After, um, trying to have the dialogue where we spoke about our differences of opinion and difference in direction, the school board is here to represent the community. And if the community as a whole is giving feedback to the school board that they're unhappy, we have to listen and at least start the conversation about the dissent in the community. And if we don't do that, we are not doing our role as an elected official. So I'm, I'm very peaceful and I have 10 children that have tried me many, many times, so I'm good at giving a second chance. But I do think that I would have no problem having a dialogue with someone that needed to be reprimanded.
Thank you. Kristi?
Um, based on prior experience in the school district, I don't really anticipate there being a large separation of values in terms of the direction that our schools are going in. I think that the strong leadership that we should expect from Ms. Kaufman will continue. The reasons why this community moves here for this school and loves their schools. And I think that the families are largely really proud of these schools and have a lot to be proud of. Um, however, school boards are a part of the fabric of democracy that's baked into our public schools. They're super important. And so we don't have to agree on all of these issues, um, that come forward to our schools. But the point is that we have civil discourse about it and that we look at multiple angles and ultimately make the best decision for kids. So I have the faith in, um, the current and future school board that as long as all of the members have information in front of them, that there's going to be, I anticipate little friction whenever we all have the same information and multiple, um, options in front of us. If we just look for what's going to be in the best interest of kids, I have to believe that we're going to be able to get, um, go really far. So, thanks.
Thank you. Michael?
So, um, can I get the question again?
Sure. What should the school board's relationship with the superintendent look like? And what would you do if you disagreed with the direction the superintendent wants to take our schools?
So ultimately, the, the superintendent is sort of a two-way conduit of information, right? The superintendent is boots on the ground. I'm not. I go to the hospital every day. He comes to the school every day. Uh, and he has the, the pulse of what's going on and how are our students doing? How are our students telling our, our social workers, our administrators that they're doing their teachers? What do the teachers feel? How are things going? In a, we're at our own chins well. The, the school board knows the direction things are going long before we make a turn. Cause there is a dialogue going on, right? Um, I, I'll speak to a couple of people who have commented on the, the majority opinion of the community. Of course, what some people can't know because they don't get all of the emails that the people on the school boards do is, I firmly believe the decisions that have been made over the last three years absolutely reflect the majority opinion of the community. This is the social media age that we live in, right? We, we hear from people that think like us. We hear from people that feel like us. Um, and a lot of folks don't hear so much from other people. We absolutely hear from people all the time that are thrilled with how things are going. Uh, and the superintendent, in this case, has been a big part of that. So I appreciate that. Of course, there's mechanisms in place. We have to be thoughtful about, you know, we have contracts with these people. We can't just ask someone, or you're on the line to pay for that person, uh, for another year or two. And you have to think about things like that.
Thank you. Tim?
Um, guys, I'm going to stand up. This is driving me crazy. These microphones down here, I can't see people. Uh, I was a teacher. If I can't see you and I'm, when I'm talking to you, like, I, it's nuts. So anyway, uh, I, I believe that the role of the school board is absolutely, uh, the, the superintendent, the superintendent works for the board. Uh, the board is the one that hired that person. Uh, hopefully the, the expectations and standards were communicated clearly and effectively, uh, during the interview process. So there shouldn't be a lot of issues on the front end. I mean, that should have been addressed and that's why this person was hired in the first place. However, at the end of the day, uh, the superintendent works, uh, for the board like in any other organization. Uh, they are the person that is responsible for executing on those issues, um, and philosophies and belief sets that the board, uh, says are important to the district. Why? Because the community has voted for those people and hopefully board members are running on an open and honest policy on what they actually believe in and what they plan on doing when they get to the board. Uh, now, that being said, there should absolutely be open lines of communication between the board and the superintendent. And I feel like there should be scheduled times where that communication is taking place. Um, but I'm also one of those folks having been in the classroom, uh, and having heard and met with my superintendent, uh, in three different states, uh, Texas, Florida, and Indiana. Uh, and, uh, that's not always the same messaging that the board, uh, is hearing, uh, from the superintendent that the teachers are actually, uh, what, what the issues are, uh, that are important to them. So as a board member, I will make sure to not only be talking to the board or to the superintendent, but also to administrators and teachers and making sure I know what they feel is important and what's going on.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, Marcus, you're next. Here's the question. Seinsville Community Schools receives some of the lowest funding per pupil in Indiana. About a fourth of our teachers are paid through a tax referendum. To retain quality teachers and expand facilities, would you support tax referendums when needed? And if not, how should Seinsville Community Schools supplement funding?
I believe that, um, support for a referendum needs to come from the community. So what I would propose is getting as much information out there in order to get the, I think, I think it was said before, the pulse of the community, if you will, such that we can better understand the support that's out there. A little bit closer. Okay. Rather than just assuming that I know what's right and what's wrong about a particular optional referendum, I believe that parents and everyone else in the community, especially those for which would be impacted by this, which would be all of us taxpaying citizens, we need to have a voice. I think it's important that it's laid out and then feedback is considered by the board. I believe it's incredibly important that the school board is a steward of all of your tax dollars of everyone that's in this room here. Because it, it's your money that's going towards improving our community and improving our home values, improving the education that our students get. It, it's incredibly important. And I think that that, I think that that is one of the most important things about what the school board does for Seinsville at large.
Thank you. Jen?
Thank you. Um, okay, so once again, uh, since living here for nine years and attending those, um, meetings when Dr. Robinson would go into the homes and the living rooms of, um, people and all of us would be there and listening to him. And the very first thing he would always talk about is how we receive the lowest funding per pupil in the state. And having just moved here at that time, I was like, well, that's interesting. And I thought, I'm going to research this and figure this out. And, uh, it's true. And then every single year after that, when I would go to those meetings, that was what we would talk about. Um, so the tax referendum is absolutely needed, I think, for the community. Um, for us to understand and approve the referendums, um, it's important for us to really understand where the money is going. Um, and, you know, what exactly we need to make up to, uh, get to the point where exactly we need to make up to get to the point where some of the communities in Indiana and what their, their tax base and what the funding is that they're receiving, how do we supplement what we're actually receiving? So it is important to be as detailed as we possibly can when looking over that information and asking the public to, for tax dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt. The microphone is coming.
I'd have to study the issue with specifics more closely to give a better answer, but I will say that teachers and nurses have a lot in common. They do all the hard work and a lot of times with more demands and they're not paid well. They're not paid properly. They're the ones doing the work. There's administrative bloat in hospitals, I'm assuming there's administrative bloat in schools. So the choice is tax increases or within the ranks down, maybe we look at administrators and see what value are they adding if we're not willing to have a tax referendum.
Thank you. Sarah.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely. "Zinsville Community Schools Receive Some of the Lowest Funding Per Pupil in Indiana. About a fourth of our teachers are paid through a tax referendum. To retain quality teachers and expand facilities, would you support tax referendums when needed? If not, how should Zinsville Community Schools supplement funding?"
Thank you. Okay, I'm all about quality teachers. I am very supportive of the teachers we have and believe in the pay that they deserve. I've been around long enough that I was here when the referendum failed. And I went in and taught gym class. I was doing something with rooms. I'm not sure what it was, but quit it, maybe. I think that it's very important to make sure we are stewards of the financial impact on the community. I think a budget review would be my first step. I would look for areas that are able to be cut, that don't impact the students as much. I would look at busing, where maybe we could ask the community to drive so that the people that are affected by the school loss are not passing on the buck to the people with no children. I think that there are many ways you can cut budgets and I would find a way to at least review that. But I agree with Matt, you would need to know more information to answer this question logically. And I would be in favor of a referendum if that was what we needed to keep our quality teachers.
Thank you. Kristi.
Thank you. I'm so sad to hear the referendum didn't pass in the past, because what I see from this community is this community steps up all the time to fill in the gaps in terms of school funding. PTOs do amazing work and organization, it's crazy, the amount of resources they bring into the schools. And yes, we are the lowest funded in the state. And it's heartening that we often step up and we do it even when there's not a referendum on the table. But I see it a little bit differently in terms of, I don't know if this is, I'm just gonna say, I think there's a lot of power in this community to advocate on behalf of the schools to get adequate funding. We shouldn't be fighting between ourselves whenever the state of Indiana's legislators have made public schools work more and more with less and less in the general fund. So rather than saying, "Figure it out on your own," there are resources that are owed to this school from the state pot that are not brought appropriately to support our teachers. We have abysmal teacher pay, not to mention the support that bus drivers, support staff, our lunch workers, all of these are real needs that fiscally responsible districts have to work on a bootstrap. And I would love to see this community be a strong voice for adequate public school funding.
Thank you. Michael.
So, you know, if anyone was around during the last referendum, you'll know I worked really hard to get it passed, so I absolutely support them. And I support them because there's really no mechanism to fund schools in an area like ours in a way that people are gonna find acceptable under the current way that schools are funded in this state. We're like the forty-ninth or forty-seventh lowest, you know, funding state in the country, which speaks to the larger issue, which is all of the schools need more money. We have a massive surplus and I, you know, we had an increase, I appreciate the fact that we got an increase to the base this year, I think it's like three hundred dollars per pupil. But the reality is that doesn't remotely keep up with what this costs our community, what it costs the schools to provide the same product. So inflation is killing us and the money we're receiving is not keeping up. I will comment, you know, we are, I think, the only district that I'm aware of at least that pays all of our senior administrators out of money that we earn. We don't use taxpayer dollars for that. So we're, the folks do an absolutely incredible job of making sure that we spend every tax dollar the best way we can. And at this point, the mechanism we have in place is referendums to pick up the rest of the spend.
Thank you. Tim.
Hello, yeah, yes, I'm gonna do this the rest of the night. Again, the first thing I would do is make sure that we are reviewing with a very critical eye how we're spending every dollar. And if that dollar is not impacting kids in a positive way in the classroom, then we would need to revisit how those dollars are being spent. That would be first and foremost, from top to bottom. Secondly, if we, if a referendum was the only other option and that's what we needed to stay competitive, I would be for that. Again, as long as those dollars, those additional dollars are being spent in a way that drove academic excellence and directly benefited the kids, period. So that's how I would approach that.
Thank you. Mike.
Well, I'd also like to, you know, thank the legislators that, you know, worked, sorry, worked together to get, you know, additional funding to all schools on that base salary. Again, I think the school board, the administration, and the community, you know, we work with those legislators to help bring that to us. I think our, you know, we continue to advocate for that. When it comes to needing to have, you know, a referendum, we've proven that we need that because of the formula for funding that we have. And as we launched the last referendum to, again, have a quarter of our teachers paid from that, you know, that was something that we reviewed through our entire cycle to ensure that we have, want a balanced budget, because we, you know, that's one of the things that, you know, the school board really kind of mandated to have is that balanced budget. And having those referendums absolutely helped us do that. So, you know, from my experience on board already, I can see that, you know, we do all these due diligence checks to make sure that we are in a position where we need those referendums and do a hundred percent agree that we do have the need for it.
Thank you. Jen, you are up. Here's the question. "Everyone agrees keeping our students safe is important. What safety measures do you support in our schools, such as school resource officers, arming teachers, metal detectors, lockdown drills, or something else?" And I can repeat that if you need it, okay?
Could you just, yep.
"Everyone agrees keeping our students safe is important. Which safety measures do you support in our schools, such as school resource officers, arming teachers, metal detectors, lockdown drills, or something else?"
Okay. Okay, I can tell you, school safety is extremely important. I do believe that the resource officers are definitely required. I would support, of course, the lockdown drills are important. I hope that we never have to use them, but they are important for our kids to know and I hate that it's something that becomes kind of normal to them. I don't like that being scared is normalcy in our schools, but, but I want them to be prepared and I think it's extremely important. I am not in favor of arming our teachers, so I think that was one of the things that you said. I, I do feel like the safety of our kids, whether they're walking to school on school property or walking home in the evenings or riding their bikes to school, I think the outside safety is important as well as inside the schools. So I think that is all I remember about your question, but I am totally in favor of everything that you've said except for arming our teachers.
Thank you. And we'll pause while the mic comes down. And Matt.
As far as safety in the schools goes, my opinion is we set up a collaboration, and they may have this, I'm not familiar with what's in place, with the local police department. I'm sure they're focused in on the best ways if a situation arises to handle it. And, thank you. And also, we would hope that we have officers that have the courage to go in and stop something. The lockdowns, I think they could set that up in a way where they have everything worked out if the situation arises. One of the main issues with the school shootings has been malhealth and they've hidden people's mental health issues and troubles and threats online. And I think, I don't care about privacy, if there's a troubled kid saying he's gonna shoot some kids in school, we need to bring that forth and send them away for some mental health and maybe not let them back in the school if they're making threats.
Thank you. Sarah.
Okay, I wrote something down here that I did wanna read. I said, "Safety is absolutely something we should not finish worrying about if we wanna do it right." I am so thankful for the SROs in the building and have had it explained to me that the people working on safety cannot outline their plan or everything being done, or then the plan is weakened. So I do hope and believe that there is more happening than everyone knows. I want the safety team to continue to learn, implement best practices. I, I think as we grow in number and our enrollment grows, we have to make sure we keep in line with adding another SRO to maybe the high school. There may be one there that I don't know about. I also think that the safety of our bikers and the high school parking lot, hey, who's been there? It does need some evaluation. We have a lot of trouble driving in with the, with the construction and we've got a lot of new drivers, so I do think it's good to have the crossing guards. And the last part would be, what do I agree with? Absolutely agree with the SROs. Arming the teachers, I don't wanna make anybody a security guard that doesn't want to be one. I can't say that I would be against if a vetted and licensed carrying gun holder was asked to have one in the west wing and one in the east wing. I don't know. I do like lockdowns, guys.
Thank you. Kristi.
Thanks. A lot of good ideas already. I am thankful that the school resource officers are already collaborating with our schools and they integrate really well. I have worked at a school with a metal detector, I've worked with a school that has had bullet holes in the windows in Chicago public schools. I grew up around firearms and it scares me to consider having a firearm in a classroom because of all of the unknowns. I think that's an accident waiting to happen, so please, no, never. That is a horrible idea. However, the Boone County Sheriff's Office is a really important partner and I am thankful that they are collaborating with us about safety and we need more of that. I know parents have really good ideas about roundabout safety, that I've seen a lot of solutions to the scary close calls that we've had bikers be almost hit or hit at intersections. We mentioned the high school parking lot, so I think that there is opportunity for further community collaboration, it's gonna need to be with the city, it's gonna need to be with the officers and with the parents, maybe stepping up and being at intersections during coming to and from school, but I think that that's gonna be really crucial.
Thank you. Michael.
I'll just start with, I'm against arming teachers. I don't know of teachers that wanna have guns at school. You know, absolutely, I think our SROs are a fundamental part of our sort of safety plan, both as a sort of reactive force, but also as a proactive force and a deterrent. But I think ultimately, like most things in life, like medicine, prevention is a big part of things, and that's ultimately where SEL has its greatest impact, you know? School shooters, as people have mentioned, are disenfranchised students. They don't feel connected to their community, they don't feel like they have friends, they don't feel like they have people that support them. We talk about strong in every way and a big part of that concept is these sort of webs of support, that people feel like, "I'm never alone, I have people who I can go to, it's my family, it's my friends, it's maybe a teacher, maybe a social worker at the school." And so a big part of safety ultimately boils down to all of the things we do to help people to feel like they belong here. Unfortunately, a lot of the other parts of safety are outside of our control, right? We have lots of things that as parents we can be advocating for at the state level, at the national level, that are gonna have a big impact on school safety.
Thank you. Tim.
Kind of in line with just about everything everybody's been saying. First and foremost, I'm gonna defer to the experts and local law enforcement. I would absolutely be pro increasing funding for our SROs, if that means additional resources, hardening schools, making it harder for points of entry, I'm good with all of that. But again, I would defer to the experts and look at the recommendations they would make, but I would be absolutely in favor of providing additional resources for all of our schools to be safer than they are today.
Thank you. Mike.
Again, I guess I did it. So, you know, SROs are, you know, critical to, you know, everyone's safety at school, allow, students allow the staff to feel safe to learn and to teach. So, you know, that is really critical. It's great that we've been able to partner with the town of Zinsville, the Boone County Sheriff's Department, there's a little bit of Whitestown in this as well, that has worked with us, specifically Chad Smith in the district office that works on safety. If you ever hear Chad talk, he's always saying that, you know, safety is, there's no finish line. This is always something that we're learning and we're adapting as we go through, you know, review of any event that happens, and there's monthly reviews that go on with these partners as well. So it's really critical that we have that. We already do run some drills as well in the high school, I know that for a fact, that, you know, they have lockdown drills, they talk about, you know, things of how students can react, what they wanna do. So I think that's really, you know, critical. Again, there's probably a lot of things that, you know, that we have going in the works that we can't talk about. But again, I also would agree that, you know, safety is not just in the building, it's outside. So how do we handle traffic along the streets or along the roads so our kids can get to school in a safe manner?
Thank you. Marcus.
And hopefully I'll hold the microphone close enough this time. Yeah, obviously, safety is incredibly important. I mean, it's important for all of our students. When all of us here send our children or grandchildren to school, we expect them to be safe and that they will return to us at the end of the day. So it's incredibly important. As Mike said, it's also incredibly important for our teachers who expect to go to school and have a safe working environment such that they can teach our children. I do not believe safety needs to be the responsibility of those teachers. So I am, I think like just about everyone else, also against arming of teachers. I believe that we should take care of safety through our, sorry, we should take care of safety through additional safety resource officers where needed, make sure that we stay on top of that so that we have enough of those resources and we provide that safe environment. I also think that we should provide more robust mental health resources, whether that be licensed clinical social workers or psychologist resources, to try and address those, those individuals that need a little additional attention, a little additional help, such that an instance of an episode does not occur, that, that then everything has to jump into action. I also think it's the responsibility of the school board or a proxy committee to be on top of new technology that emerges, that provides additional safety at our schools. I think it's a constant learning environment, I think we need to stay on top of what we can do to continue to provide that safety to our students and our teachers.
Thank you. Okay, Matt, the mic's down to Matt. I'm gonna do my best to get us through two more questions, I know we're getting up onto eight thirty, but I think the next two questions should be, hopefully, a little bit easier to answer, maybe not, we shall see. We'll see how far. We'll see how far we get. So Matt, here's the question, "What should we do to support the mental health of students and should we continue social and emotional learning lessons?" Here it is again, "What should we do to support the mental health of students and should we continue social and emotional learning lessons?"
I believe that mental health issues should be supported by professional help and not by untrained and cognitive therapy, untrained and cognitive therapy teachers and guidance counselors. They should go see, true mental health issues should be referred out for professional help. I believe that SEL is a waste of mainstream kids' time to actually get educated in the classroom. I downloaded this from a Montessori school. It's kind of in sense, values should be taught as virtues, I mean virtues should be taught as values. If you read the list of virtues I have here, it would cover everything SEL promises to give you but isn't needed in most kids. Most of them learn it at home. And the ones that don't learn it at home, they can have an SEL program for troubled students or people that wish to have their child in an SEL program. Most people don't, I believe.
Thank you. Sarah?
You said this question was easy.
I think I said a little easier.
Okay, a little easier. So we do have a mental health problem. A few of my kids have lost friends. It's real, it's here in Zionsville and it's been something that I've been very concerned about. That's part of why I'm looking for ways for children to be children again. I think some of the issues that they are presented with at certain ages are just too much and we have kids doing lockdowns, they're, that's real, guys. Our kindergartners are hearing that a bad guy might come get them at school. So how do we not say there's mental health issues? I would probably not have slept at night if that had been told to me. So we've got to look into ways that we're delivering important messages, but somehow meeting it with some sort of mental health support at the same time. We can't just scare our children that they have to fight bad guys. As far as see something, say something, I think we need to repeat that to our kids and to the community. I've seen a lot of social media challenges, kids are thinking, "Let's do it, let's go wreck the bathroom." We need to know where our kids are. Where are your kids? They shouldn't be at the school wrecking bathrooms after hours. SEL, I think teaching kids not to be bullies, teaching kids how to deal with emotions, it's fine, it's good, it's part of life, but let's just make sure that the SEL doesn't say go to the school instead of their parents.
Thank you. Kristi?
Mental health is super important in our schools and our counselors are overwhelmed. They would, I've had my own daughter on a waiting list to have services and there's just not those services, so we need more resources for that for sure. And kids need a variety of ways to connect. This school district is rightfully really proud of its academics, but there are all kinds of ways that kids need to form relationships and feel valued outside of a narrow SAT score or some other academic measures because kids have all kinds of strengths. And so the more that they have opportunities to go after their passions after school, in sports, in drum line, in the choral errors, any of the activities that we have around schools are really good opportunities for them to connect and whenever adults and their peers can really get to know them, that's one of our best defenses for catching kids and making sure that they're not feeling isolated. I also think that it's really important for, I guess I'll end with, social and emotional learning to me is just learning to be a good person, how we treat our friends. In kindergarten, we talked about that, it's made part of the curriculum, that we are kind to each other and this is how we treat each other, so I don't think you patron that.
Thank you. Michael?
So in terms of mental health treatment, one of the things that I was part of when I first started on the board was we had a partnership with the community mental health agency where we had one therapist for seven schools. And what we did was reexamine that relationship and we have a new partnership now where we have therapists in every school. The challenge, of course, is there's a massive dearth of mental health providers. I get job offers thrice daily because there just aren't enough of them around. psychiatrists are about six months right now, community mental health centers are closed to intakes in some locations. So the challenge is not system-wide, it's a big macro challenge that we face and it's a, you know, it's a problem for our country unfortunately. In terms of SEL, the reality is that is not mental health treatment in any way, shape or form. It's a skill set that we teach to people. You go, here's the idea, I said this maybe somewhere, you know, hungry kids can't learn. SEL, it speaks to the idea that if certain conditions are met, kids aren't going to be in the right state to learn. SEL was developed by teachers who recognized, I can't just teach math. I could teach the best math lesson around, but if this kid isn't in a mental state where they can take that in, it doesn't matter. So teachers developed SEL to get to the kids that they couldn't get to before. We absolutely need to do that.
Thank you. Tim?
Sure. When I was twenty-two years old, I graduated from Ball State, was hired to teach in Pasadena, Texas, just outside Houston. And we were assigned, we got to choose which groups we were going to work with when kids went to their club activity, we had an activity period. So if you didn't go to Spanish club or the basketball club or the French club, we offered other options. There was the divorce club, if your kid and parents were getting divorced. There was a club for kids who've been through physical or sexual abuse and a bunch of others. I was asked to go through two days of training and then as a twenty-two-year-old, I was sitting down with your high school student, talking to them about their physical and sexual abuse and their divorces they were going through. I was not equipped to handle that. I actually had no business talking to these kids about that. But that was part of SEL when I first started teaching. Now, it's a long time ago and it's evolved and changed a lot. I love what's going on at the elementary level. I learned even more last night from another parent about what's going on. But I think we have to be very careful about how SEL is actually being used in the classroom. We have to be very careful about the data that is being mined from our children and given to organizations that we have written contracts, we have signed contracts with. And again, we have to remind ourselves that teachers and counselors are not adequately prepared to play those roles and we're asked to do it all the time, that's just part of being a teacher. But the basic tenants of SEL, teachers have taught organically from day one, all right? That's just part of what we teach kids to be good citizens and good students. But I'm absolutely for more money to support more funding for licensed support for our students.
Mike?
So when it comes to mental health, you know, again, I think it's critical, Michael, Mr. Bird kind of hit on that issue, where there is a gap, we have a demand for more, more counselors, more psychologists than what there are available. So it creates a gap, so we have to prioritize who's going to talk to who. As a board, we have been working diligently to increase that number, get that access for the students as they go through, you know, post-pandemic and any other cycle that it is. One thing that's kind of interesting when you think about strong in every way, there is a pillar in there that talks about students being seen, being heard. You know, it's, we encourage our teachers, maybe not necessarily to be that psychologist, but to be able to have that conversation, to have that student be able to come forward and say, "Hey, I've made a connection with this teacher." You know, I may not be a science kid, but I've made a connection with a science teacher that's going to help me out when I need to ask a question. That is really critical. In regards to SEL, that's a state mandated, that's a requirement in Indiana code. So if we don't like it, talk to the state legislature. They demand that we talk and teach SEL. So that's pretty easy to say, yes, we should do it.
Marcus?
Yes, so like a number of others, I believe mental health and SEL are kind of separate topics. Regarding the mental health, I think that we absolutely need to develop, or not develop, but attract more robust resources. As I mentioned on a prior question, licensed clinical social workers, psychologist resources. I'd also agree that there is a lot of demand out there right now with fairly short supply. At my employer, I'm directly involved in the location and hiring of mental health resources and I have found that if you frame the opportunity correctly, you can attract burned-out mental health resources from other areas of the industry to bring them in to fill the need. With regard to SEL, I believe that there are some components that are fairly innocuous and fairly okay to teach, such as, let's not bully people, let's learn to listen. These are typically focused in on the elementary level, including my own son, and I'm perfectly fine with these. I believe that there's a number of instances where SEL can go too far, where it starts to, rather than identifying implicit bias, it actually builds in bias into our students. It also covers a number of complex and very mature topics for which are not necessarily that all students at a certain grade level are ready to hear. So I believe that that's more of a parent responsibility and that parents need to be involved in the teaching of those topics. They're going to be the best measure of their children and how mature they are and ready to understand those topics.
Andrew?
Thank you. Mental health is extremely important to me. Personally, I have a son, have a son, he was a freshman in high school and suffered severe depression and was at St. Vincent for ten days. And when he got out of St. Vincent, he needed to continue three days a week in therapy, outpatient. And what many in this community do not know is that there is actually a bus that goes from Zionsville High School to St. Vincent Stress Center and that bus was full. So I had to actually drive to the high school and pick him up and drive him to St. Vincent three days a week. He's doing amazing now, but I just want people to know that mental health is extremely, extremely important to me and at every level in elementary and the middle school and the high school. We need to normalize talking about it and talking about our feelings, no matter how uncomfortable it may be. SEL, I'm a super proponent for SEL. I think it's extremely important and I want every parent kindergarten through eighth grade to know that the curriculum is second steps and you can, you probably see it in your newsletters every week and you can identify and go through every single thing that your teachers are teaching your kids. And it's, I have lots of examples of how it has been a wonderful tool for mothers personally. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to give the candidates an opportunity for a final statement and I'm going to start with Sarah. And we did make it all the way around and I apologize that we're a little bit behind the eight-thirty timeframe, but I think this is very important for the community to hear your voices. So if you'd like to give a closing statement, this is your chance and we'll start with Sarah.
All right. Thank you to the administrators of tonight's program and to all of you for listening for so long. To ensure you hear that I'd be honored and ready to serve, I'm going to do a top ten countdown. Ten, I am for the families. I've been a parent for twenty-seven years and understand how it is to be a parent of children in high ability classes and with, I have children in special education and I have children in general education. Nine, I am for the teachers. I've had many amazing teachers become my friends and I appreciate their expertise and partnership in raising my children. Eight, I am for the community. When I served as a teacher rep for PTO and delivered meals to our teachers for fourteen years, I only used local businesses, even when asked to bring in food from other companies that were outside our community. I understand how a community should support each other. Seven, I'm educated in business as a CPA and audited nonprofit, so I'll be using my combined parental and business perspectives when making decisions on the board. Six, I want skills classes offered that can help lead to successful adulthood capabilities and possible careers. Five, I'm a volunteer who's comfortable leading and being involved in CCS and I've been doing it for seventeen years. Four, I see the people at CCS as our biggest strength. We are a strong community filled with great families, dedicated teachers, administrators, and incredible extracurricular opportunities. Three, I'm deeply rooted here, want Zionsville to remain a school district leader in the state of Indiana. Two, I'm for transparency. You can contact me at sarahbsanson.com. And one, I'm asking for your vote. Sarah Sampson.
All right. Thank you. Kristi?
Hi. So in conclusion, I hope that, I appreciate everybody that spent their evening here and I hope you got a lot of good information, but the information doesn't have to stop here. I hope you do your homework on our various pages. I'm Kristi for CCS School Board. If you want to find more about me as a candidate for at-large position, and I hope that you will vote for the candidate who has the most experience to bring to the position and is going to work at the best interest of all of this community's kids. And my promise as a candidate for school board would be that I will listen and make the best decisions that I can in the best interest of children after hearing all the perspectives. Thanks.
Thank you. Michael?
Hi. Thanks for joining us tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to talk with a large group of constituents. You know, my big thing is, unfortunately, I feel like there's a narrative that's being pushed that our schools are somehow failing and I think it's just candidly false. I think our schools are excelling, you know, we talk about test scores and we just were the third-best school district in the state in higher. The tests aren't a great indicator of how well a school district is doing anyway. They're fundamentally, take too much time and resources away from, you know, student-centric education and that's ultimately going to be a larger predictor of future success. I want to remain on the board because I believe that our schools are doing fantastically well. I want to continue to support teachers and administrators and I don't want our teachers and administrators to leave because they see that there's a district next door where they're not going to be micromanaged. We need to respect them as professionals and we need to keep them here because they are what make these schools great.
Thank you. Tim?
Thanks again, everybody, for being here tonight. Thank you for putting on the forum and thank you to my team for all the support. As the only candidate here with any really significant public school teaching experience, I really know firsthand the value in establishing good working relationships between teachers, parents, administrators, and a board. It's really kind of why I was so disappointed over the last few years to see some members of the board be disrespectful and kind of dismissive to parents' voices and concerns over the last several years. Some of the responses to COVID, some of the responses to redistricting, not replying to email inquiries in a timely manner or at all, being told not to reply to email inquiries, and even resorting to making fun of parents on social media, I just find that to be unnecessary. I find that our community, I believe that our community deserves better than this, we are better than that, and that Zionsville is truly, is home to truly some of the most incredible teachers, families, and facilities in the state. We have an incredible opportunity here. But the only way we're going to be able to maximize that opportunity is to really open the lines of communication. Communication is the key to every successful organization or relationship, but that needs to be a two-way street. Two-way communication is how we take Zionsville Community Schools from good to good. That's why I'm making a commitment to all of you, if you have your pens out, pencils out, writing utensils, I'll put on my teacher hat, my number is seven six five nine seven eight 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 four eight, that's my personal cell phone. You can reach me anytime to talk about any issues that are important to you and I look forward to your vote.
Thank you. Thank you. Mike?
I'd like to also join everyone here, thanking everyone who's come out tonight, those that are online watching this, I think there's going to be recording of this, so thank you all for that. I look forward to continuing to represent Union and the entire school district and, you know, after the election. I use my engineering background a lot in what I'm doing. I like to say you don't have to be a rocket scientist to do this job, but it does help. When we look at it, you know, again, we need to continue to focus on students' growth, how do they have a pathway to succeed? We want everyone to be safe, we want them to be healthy, we want everything to be focused on students doing what the school should be doing, is educating them, getting them out into the workforce. And also, again, we need to be mindful though of, you know, what we're doing with that financial stewardship that we're given by the voters, how we manage all of that. We're all in this together, it's not just one individual doing this, it's not just the school board, it takes everyone here to make that successful. So I just want to remind everyone that as you're voting, you get three votes, you get to vote for each district regardless of where you are in the school district.
Thank you. Marcus?
Just like most of the others, I also want to thank- Just like most of the others, I also want to thank all of you for spending such precious time this evening, sitting here and listening to all of us answer all of these questions. And I really admire all of you for being so dedicated in order to educate yourselves so much so that you can vote appropriately and as informed as you possibly can. I want to, I just want to mention that our schools are amazing. I think that they are fantastic and absolutely not failing. I do, however, think it's important not to be too arrogant to think that we cannot improve and become better than we even are. As a result, I think that we can improve, as I mentioned at the start of all of this, with our communication style and our ability to partner with the parents and the community at large to make sure that we are joined at the hip rather than one versus the other. I also think we need to improve our transparency and our accountability of our school board. And I would be more than happy to leverage my skills as an actuary, both of my expertise in finance, as well as data analytics and risk assessment in order to try to help create that accountability and fiscal responsibility of our school board. And then I also believe that we should support our teachers such that they can do the best that they can possibly do and do what they did when they went to school of coming out to teach our children and get out of their way. For these things, I have asked for your support and asked for your vote this November. If you'd like to learn more about me, my site is suchforschoolboard.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim?
Thank you, everyone. I will serve the school board by continuing to support teachers, celebrate kids, and build community just like I did when I ran here nine years ago. It's important to have a board member who is energized about the schools and community, knowledgeable about the resources available in the buildings, and who has the strength and determination to pull it all together and stand out for the many. I am confident I am the right person for this job. I will bring a new perspective to some, on some common issues and will be a catalyst to help bridge a divide that has been growing for years between parents and the school board. Not all kids are the same and they don't all have the same goals and dreams. It is important to me that all kids are heard and given the opportunity to succeed in and out of the classroom. There are a lot of positive things happening in the schools, and I will continue to help move that needle forward. I enjoy listening to different ideas. In fact, I took the initiative last November and again earlier this year to attend some meetings with people who are now candidates and who think differently than I do. I invite anyone who is curious about me to go to my Facebook page, Valentine for ZCS School Board, or my website, valentine4zcs.com, or message me directly. I have only good intentions and respect for the teachers, administrators, parents, and the 8,000 students in this community. Again, I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and I look forward to seeing you at the polls.
Thank you. And Matt?
Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I really appreciate getting some words out to the public. In my opinion, I'm clearly the best candidate. I have the most life experience by far. We used to call that wisdom. I have a great vision moving forward. I'm pro-child, married a teacher, so I'm very pro-teacher. And I'm much for the parents. I am getting quite an education in local power brokers and politics as I move through this. The extreme left doesn't seem to like me. I see through their deceptions. I explain terms to them. The local Republican leaders also don't like me. I can't be controlled. I'm vocal, informed, and I'm not compliant to outside interests. I will represent you with honesty and integrity. I want to give a shout out to Marcus Such. I've recently made a new friend. I think he's the strongest candidate for the budget. And he's a kind, brilliant man. It's been a true pleasure to meet you. I'm not disparaging any of the other candidates. I wish them luck. Vote for the candidate you think will be best for the community values.
I'd like to thank all of you for spending extra time answering these questions. Audience, can we give it up for the candidate?